I've called the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand for the... ...invocations and the pledge of allegiance. This is Carrie.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thou will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Good evening, welcome to the Lee County Board of Commissioners meeting. The young commissioners opened up. Those McKenzie Serrano, Savannah Presley Lee, and Talitha Humberker. I trust I pronounced that right, Talitha. My screen went... All right, you have before you the agenda. I do need to make two adjustments. On the consent agenda, we're going to add a budget amendment, and that budget amendment is item 2L. Under new business, section 6D, we're going to have the request from the Lee County Board of Education for the county to purchase a modular unit for Southern Lee High School. Any other additions to the agenda? Do I have a motion to...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Is there any way we could get, under new business, or the indoor... Yeah, but it's the one we want to... The iron furnace. Could we get that put on the consent agenda?
The indoor iron furnace proposal to place on the consent agenda?
Right. Without objection.
No objection, no objections.
So moved.
Okay, moving the indoor iron furnace to the consent agenda. That will be item 2M. Any other changes? Seeing there are none, can I get an approval for the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. Any questions, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Can I get an approval for the consent agenda as amended? Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as amended. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of the 2023 Lee County Young Commissioners Leadership Program Participants, and Ms. Jocelyn Gomez.
Hello, and good evening. My name is Jocelyn Gomez. I'm the president of the Lee County Young Commissioners, and on behalf of the young commissioners, we would like to thank y'all for dinner and for spending part of your afternoon with us today. Ten years ago, Chair Commissioner Smith and Dr. Bill Stone created this club to make better future citizens and leaders of Lee County, and here they are to introduce themselves.
Hello, my name is Jermaine Nairn, and I'm a rising ninth grader, and I'm going to Lee Early College.
My name is Jeanne Apperson, and I am a rising senior at Lee Early College.
I'm Talitha Heimbecker. I'm a rising eighth grader, and I go to Ascend Leadership Academy.
I'm McKenzie Serrano. I'm a rising eighth grader at Wesley Middle School.
I'm Savannah Presley Lee, and I'm a rising sophomore at Ascend Leadership Academy.
I'm Jayla Tabora, and I'm a rising sophomore at LEC.
I am Sophia Macias, and I'm a rising eighth grader at Wesley Middle School.
That was everybody? Okay, well, welcome, thank you very much. Hope you'll stay as long as you can to enjoy how sausage is made. All right, I thank you. If we could please form to the front here so we can get a group picture with the young commissioners as well as the board of commissioners? I apologize, my computer times out every five minutes. I have no choice, it's what it does. Next item on the agenda, public comments. And I have Mr. Mark Coggins. Mr. Coggins, please introduce yourself as well as provide the clerk your address.
Good afternoon, I'm Mark Coggins. Live at 3909 Hunt Springs Drive. I'm here to talk about the possibility of making indoor iron furnace either a county park or a state park. I've been working on this since 1954 as a Boy Scout, and I have a photo, if anybody's interested in seeing, that I took at that time. It's the only existing photo with the indoor iron furnace intact. Okay? So, I've given you a handout about the indoor iron furnace, that some of the facts that I could find about it. My main point is that if we would create a state park or a county park, it would bring an enormous amount of tourism to Lee County. Okay? There is Arsenal in Fayetteville, which is nothing but bare grounds, and about 100,000 people come to see it every year. So even if we get 10,000 people coming to see the state park, it would bring probably around $4 to $5 million every year of tourism money to the county. This would be restaurants, hotels, and other events that would be going on. Along with the state park, you could have bike trails and other features that would be typical of a state park. And I'd like you to consider it, and thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is under old business, appointments to boards and commissions. I do have a request that Commissioner Vorbeck be recused. Do need a motion on that, please? In order for...
Just for the Parks and Rec Board?
Just for the Parks and Rec block. Do I have a motion to recuse Commissioner Vorbeck?
So moved.
Motion's been made to recuse Commissioner Vorbeck from the Parks and Rec vote. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And if you would be so kind as to fill out your ballot, and I believe someone over there will come by and pick it up?
Commissioners, you all have a ballot at your seat. It is the final ballot. We did not have any additional applications received since this past Thursday, so you should have the most up-to-date version. Just a little background, we've been advertising for our vacancies since April. We do advertise year-round. We just have the majority of our expiring terms in June, so we do a big push this time of year. You've received all of the applications in a few different rounds, and... Yes, if you will complete that ballot at your seat and then sign it when you are finished, and give it to Ms. Parrish, and we will begin tabulating and give those results during the manager's report. So Lisa, if you could make note of that. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for the clerk? If I could just add, young commissioners, you do have parents, adults in your family. If you want to twist their arms to get them involved in the local government, all the things you learned today, feel free. And then just get in contact with the clerk. That'll work. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the skimmer system for the Moore Center under old business, and this is for the county manager.
I'll go ahead and introduce Ryan. Ryan Kearns is here from TerraQuest to bring us up to date on where we are at the Moore Center with the hazardous waste issue we have. So he's going to come forward and explain to you what the next steps we need to do and bring you up to date.
Good evening. I brought some figures I passed around. Did everyone get a copy of those? See some of y'all holding them up. So I am Ryan Kearns. I work with TerraQuest Environmental Consultants. We're a consulting firm in Meban, North Carolina, just north of y'all in Alamance County. We've been working on this Magnetti Morelli project since just before the county bought it. The original aerial map of the facility is shown on what I've got labeled as kind of Plate A, the very first page. So that's what the factory looked like working under the hazardous waste permit. Before y'all bought it, you can see there's still cars of employees in the parking lot. So this facility is a permitted hazardous waste facility. As such, the permit that it is operating under has 27 solid waste management units. Those are all shown on this figure. Those are referred to as schmooze, solid waste management unit. So after Morelli moved their equipment out of the building, you can see on the next plate, Plate B, all the solid waste management units are gone except for one. So we worked with the county to go around to each one of the solid waste management unit areas, be it a place where there was solvents or chemicals or metal shavings or different types of equipment, and kind of take a before-and-after shot and take a soil sample at each location to report to the regulators that this equipment is gone, these chemicals are gone, and we can change the status of that schmooze from active to no further action is necessary. And so the regulators have agreed with that. That's where on Plate B, you can see the map's fairly empty except for one area on the northwest side of the manufacturing building. There's Schmooz 17, a former Stoddard tank. So what that is, is a 20,000-gallon underground tank that held Stoddard solvent. It was used to flow test the carburetors and the throttle bodies that the manufacturing facility produced. And that tank leaked over time and put quite a bit of that product in the ground, in the soil and the groundwater. It's a semi-volatile chemical. It's a derivative of petroleum, so it does float, but it's considered a hazardous waste. On Plate C, next page, you can see the northwest corner of the building with a red line showing the outline of the Stoddard solvent plume back in February of 2022. So that's essentially what it looked like when the county bought it. There's dissolved phase stuff. It's a bigger plume in the groundwater as well, but being a semi-volatile, this stuff doesn't break down into groundwater and travel very far. If this was something like gasoline, you would have a much larger plume and it'd be a bigger problem. The free product is kind of what we're after out there. A lot of the other stuff is a little bit easier to take care of. So on Plate C, you can see the July 2022 limits of excavation. That was our first thing that we proposed in a work plan that was presented to the Department of Environmental Quality. We went and met with all of them, and they signed off on the plan. So in July, we went out there and did this very large excavation to remove aquifer material and the Stoddard solvent that was floating on the water table. You can see, though, that it doesn't extend all the way to the building. In fact, there's a lot of utilities that are between the building and the area of excavation where we couldn't dig, and certainly there's structural reasons not to undermine the building or the basement with excavation. The excavation is shown in Plate D. There's an actual picture of the excavation. So that's looking at the building. You can see behind the orange barrels, there's a bunch of land that we didn't excavate. But when you look at that, you can see the teeth marks of the excavator on the excavation wall all the way down into the gray material. It's about an 18 to 20-foot excavation depth that was performed. Groundwater that the Stoddard solvent is floating on is at about 15 feet. So we were deep into the aquifer to actually remove that material. That's a 300-series excavator that's sitting on the right side of the picture, which is a pretty big machine. So that gives you a little bit of scope of the excavation that was performed. Plate E shows the excavation as well, and you can see the swatch of land that's between the building and the limits of excavation where we stopped and we didn't move any further towards the building. Excuse me. So that was backfilled and compacted. But that was the means of remediation of treatment of that Stoddard solvent, was to remove it completely and take it to a permitted facility for disposal. In Plate F, you can see the extents of the free product after the excavation was conducted, and you can see that it's limited to the wall of the excavation in the building. So it did a really good job of removing it out of the area, out around the tank where the most contaminated part of it was. On Plate G is a different view of that product plume, kind of an up-close view of it. It's got a kind of a radar pattern on it showing where there's greater thicknesses and lesser thicknesses of the Stoddard solvent. So this was after the excavation, but before we did any further work on it. We subsequently went out there, installed a bunch more wells. We blew air into the ground. We pumped hot water underneath the building, and we applied a vacuum onto the wells that are in this Stoddard solvent plume that you're looking at as a means of pumping it out and getting rid of it, which is what the state wanted. So on Plate H, you can see what it looks like in May. Most of the reds and orange colors of the thickness, the greater thicknesses are gone. We're down to less than a half foot in a large part of the plume. So it's done a good job so far at removing it. There is one well that has the red circle, which is, of course, closest to the tank where there is still a little bit of a thickness of a few feet of product in the one well. Free-phase Stoddard solvent is shown in a picture in Plate I. So that's a plastic sampling baler that was lowered into a well and retrieved, and you can see that it's completely full of Stoddard solvent. So there's no water, even at the bottom of that baler. So the last vacuum event that we did was in April and May. We actually did two weeks of vacuuming, and then three weeks where we let the aquifer equilibrate, and then we did another two weeks of vacuuming. In between those vacuum events is where this picture was taken from one of the wells. That's a lot of product to look at. It is good to see it, though, because it means it's in an area where we can retrieve it. Part of the goal out there was to blow air into the aquifer and apply a high vacuum. If there's any clays or different types of soil matrix that are holding on to that product, you want it to let loose and get it into wells where we can vacuum it out into the onsite frac tank that we had so that it could be taken to a permitted facility. Plate J shows the inside of the frac tank. If you're wondering what thousands and thousands of gallons of Stoddard solvent looks like that's been weathered in the ground, that's on Plate J. Plate K shows what a frac tank looks like. So that's the actual frac tank that sat over on the Morelli property for about eight months, I think, eight to 10 months, that we kept doing different vacuum events and pumping this solvent into where it could get taken off-site for disposal. So I've met with the county manager and attorney loads of times over the last couple of years to discuss the path forward. On this job, we've got 27 of the 28 schmoozes taken care of. We've probably done more in the last year than they have in 30 or 40 years over there towards taking care of this problem. So the state regulatory body is very happy with the progress that's been made. But before they can sign off on it, we need more work to be done. We need to get rid of all the product that's there. And there is still some dissolved phase stuff that's there that occasionally blow air into the aquifer to work on that as well. So different paths forward from here range from doing nothing, which is certainly cheap, but it's not really an option. The next means would be to go out and use those balers to hand-bail product out of wells. That would be an awful lot of man-hours. It's not terribly effective. Once it's bailed out of the product right then, it may take a few days for it to come back in. Other methods have been discussed. Other consultants a few years ago recommended putting in a half-million-dollar treatment system that would be a permanent version of the vacuum system that we had placed onsite as a mobile unit. That's a lot of overkill and may not give time for the aquifer to move up and down to get that product out of there. It would be a very expensive way of doing it. The vacuum events that we've done have been really effective. We've got, I think, about 54,000 gallons of contaminated water and product out, and a lot of it volatilizes in the atmosphere as well. It is an expensive method, though. So there was a lot of haste originally on this project to get it done. Some of that's calmed down a little bit. So I think kind of the middle ground would be to put balers into those wells that have product in them, and they make product skimmers that have a baler kind of built onto them that as the product enters the baler, eventually it triggers a float, and nebulically it would get pumped to an onsite storage tank. So it's a much cheaper method than putting a full-blown system in or than to keep doing these mobile vacuum unit events that we're doing. It's not as effective as the great big vacuum application, but it is effective, and it would bring in free product. So that's what's been our proposal, is to implement some product skimmers out there. They would require service, maintenance, and then getting the tank that fills full of the recovered Stoddard solvent would have to get pumped out as it filled up. So those costs are, I believe, on the budget that was provided in the meeting agenda. And then that's been summed up on the... The item that I'm listed under has, in the summary, has a summed number at the very bottom, $175,000. That includes maintenance, installation, the equipment costs and maintenance of that system, and periodic disposal of the Stoddard solvent that would get recovered. So that's a method of getting towards the goal of being done with this site. We're still working with the regulator. The actual permit for the facility expired 10 or 15 years ago that we're still working under. A renewal application was sent in in 2017 by another consultant, and when the property came up for sale, they were still reviewing it, so they halted review, knowing that it was about to change who the permittee was. So now that it's in Lee County's hands, we submitted a permit renewal application in June of 2022, and we just got that back in February where they had reviewed it. We've made a few different changes working with the regulators since then, and the final one was sent in today. So that's moving and on track. I believe it requires a public hearing and some other stuff that Department of Environmental Quality will set up themselves as a hazardous waste permit. But once that goes into play, it has the different methods in there listed as corrective actions, which is what they wanted. So blowing air into the aquifer, putting skimmers in, doing vacuum events, all those things are listed as possible solutions. But right now, we're proposing to put the skimmers in.
Thank you, sir. Questions from Mr. Kearns? Commissioner Carver?
I guess the only big question I have is, what kind of effect does it have on the ability to go forward with the Moore Center? Is there any limitations that you see?
So right now, there's the area of the excavation that has gravel on top of it over there. I know they've coned all around it to be able to do the trucking school and everything. That seems to be working, although I'm sure they'd rather have that. But while we're working in that area, it would be best, if we do blow air into the aquifer, that it's got a way to escape to the atmosphere, so I'd rather not cap that with asphalt. So for right now, that's a slight limitation on the property's use. As part of the money that's been spent on this, we did a whole air vapor survey within the basement and in the building of what the vapors are that are coming up through the sub-slab, and it's been deemed that it's okay for use, as is intended, as a school. So there aren't any restrictions on the building and what can be done? The area along the building that has that product in it where we're working, and the area of the excavation, which is where the dissolved phase contamination still is, that needs to be left alone. But the building can move forward with whatever folks want to do with it, in the sense that it was intended for the community college.
Thank you. Commissioner, connect, questions? Good, thank you. Commissioner Vorbeck?
And you've proposed for this to go on, the skimmers to, for the year?
What's proposed is for a one-year budget for them, correct? Knowing how long it'll take is a little bit of a crystal ball. But I would imagine it would be a year, at least.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
I just got two questions. One, Rain for Rent, is that the name of the company? Or you actually rent rainwater, or what?
No.
What is it?
That's the name of the company that we rented the frac tank from.
Oh, okay. I don't know, you're gonna rent rain, but anyway.
I'm sure they'll rent it to you, though.
Yeah, I bet they will. How firm are these numbers in terms of the monitoring system?
The monitoring system is sent out for bid, and that's a firm number included within that. Beyond that, the maintenance and stuff is... Beyond that, the, the maintenance and stuff is a little bit fluid. That also includes insulation of a few different wells. If you remember that one red circle that's there nearest to the tank, I'd like to put a few more monitoring wells around that area. So that's included in the price. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you when you thought you'd be out of there, but you said it's kind of like a crystal ball type.
It, it's difficult to know. Again, we really, we've made more progress in the last year than has happened in 30 years because Morelli just didn't do very much because they didn't have an incentive to. It, it's not a 10-year project. It's probably not a five-year project. It's, it's a six-month to one-year project for sure. And somewhere in the middle there, I'm really not sure how things will go. I mean, we've made a lot of strides. The more money that gets put at it, the quicker it'll happen, but we're trying to budget what's reasonable with how fast it happens.
Thank you.
From our summary here, it says the cost of the system and installation is $54,494.09. Quarterly maintenance and disposal costs are estimated to be at $24,180. And the sum total to the county would be $175,394.09 for one year. Do we get a guarantee on that?
No.
Any other questions? Motion's been made to approve the cost of the system and installation for the skimmer system necessary and quarterly maintenance for the mitigation of hazardous waste at the Moore Center. Any further discussion?
Well, when will your next update be?
I'm in contact
That's true.
with the county manager fairly frequently, but however often you'd like, I'm available. So.
No, I just didn't notice he kind of, on the quarterly maintenance, if we got a quarterly update on how the schmooze?
How the schmooze, there's only one schmoo left. How the stutter tank is doing, yeah. Yeah, that'd be part of the maintenance and the assessment as we move forward would be taking a meter. I don't know if it would happen every week, but probably once a month and taking measurements of what's left and what we're getting out. And the weekly visits, the skimmers have a travel to them of a couple of feet, but sometimes they get gummed up and they get fussy. So we'd be going probably weekly just to make sure everything was running really well. They had some version of the system over there originally and Morelli was in charge of it and they said it never worked, but they never took care of it. And I heard from other consultants that they, they never worked on it at all. So everything filled full of water and it didn't do anything. So it does need maintenance on it to keep it running properly. But yeah, in the first few months, we're gonna see a lot of change, I would imagine. So we'd be happy to provide an update whenever you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Again, we have a motion, any other questions, discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Let's get it done in less than a year. Next item on the agenda is the under new business is the update on North Carolina Department of Transportation projects at Lee County. And we have our DOT representative on the board, Lisa Mathis. Good to see you, madam.
Well, it is good to see you too, Chairman. Thank you so much for the kind invitation for us to come see you here tonight. Lots of friendly faces over here. I am Lisa Mathis and I am the Division Eight Board of, Board of Transportation member and, and we represent the, this area, which is Division Eight, which encompasses eight counties. We're here to speak on a few projects that Chairman Smith had asked about. The first of which is the Tramway intersection. We'll also be covering some conditions for bikers on several roads in the, in the county, as well as the Highway 87 corridor. So I'm going to, to turn it over to our Division Eight Division Engineer, Patrick Norman.
Thank you, Lisa. Commissioner, it's good to be here tonight. Thanks for the invitation, as Lisa said. It's good to be in front of you. So we do have several bits of information we want to share in our conversations with, with David Montgomery. He did share a few items that we'd like to talk about, but if there's questions about anything else along the way, feel free to bring it up and we can discuss those as well. So first, I do want to talk about the, the US-1 15501 project in Tramway. As Lisa mentioned here on the screen, you can see a diagram essentially that shows the study area of the, the two-step SDIP projects, our State Transportation Improvement Program projects, numbers U-5727 and U-5975 from the south end. You can see just from just below 15501 as you head north, the 5975 project ends just below 78 Tramway Road. And then the 5727 project picks up from there and runs to just north of Carthage Street. And includes the relocation of Highway 78 north to across from the intersection at Pendergrass Road. So right-of-way is ongoing on this project as we speak. We've made contact with a majority of the property owners and we're working through those. As we are progressing through right-of-way, the next step would obviously be to move utilities. We start with what we call dry utilities, so your power, your telecom, those things will start being moved as soon as possible. As you can see on the note, we had a, a desire to get most of that done prior to the 24 open, which is next year, a year from now. So a lot of work to be done there. We won't be done, but the project will go to construction in August of 2025. And so the predominant design for this corridor is what we would call reduced conflict intersections. Sorry, I went too far sensitive buttons here. And so essentially what a reduced conflict intersection does is it eliminates or limits the actual left turning movements from side streets and from driveways. So it is somewhat of a congestion mitigation. It is a conflict reduction type of application that, as you can see, the benefits here. It does simplify, simplify the traffic movement. It reduces your, you know, eight-phase signalized intersections which do slow down traffic. So in addition to reducing risk collisions and improving safety, it can accommodate more traffic. So I think we all know US-1 is a, is a growing in traffic. We got a lot of, a lot of things happening north and south of here. This is a popular area to be in. US-1 is also what we call a strategic transportation corridor for the department. So it is some, it is a route where we want to preserve mobility. So moving people north and south through the area is of priority. Some other benefits, as you can see here, what signals will be implemented into the project, there are, they will be synchronized so we have the ability to, to monitor those and we can adjust signal timings to help do control some speeds. And one thing that was really important here, having a four-lane divided section with a minimal amount of right-of-way now with elevation differences between the northbound and southbound lanes, as the design does, limit the impacts to property. So that's been something that's been beneficial. So the majority of what we're having to acquire now is really so we can move utilities and do things to set up U-turn bulbs and things like that for the traffic that's gonna be moving north and south. Sorry about that. And just a quick diagram here, one of the benefits we talked about on safety. As you can see, the top is your standard intersection design. Laser pointer's not working, but that's your standard full movement intersection. You can see you got in a potential of 32 conflict points in that type of intersection. The majority of those are crossing type conflicts. You can see with the white circles. So in your standard intersection, you have 30 or 16 crossing type conflicts, a total of 32 conflicts, whereas with the reduced conflict intersection, hence the name, the, the total conflict points reduces from 32 to 18 and eliminates all but two of those crossing conflicts. So it's a much safer scenario for, for the corridor. And so that's, that's the quick update on that project. If there's any questions, we'll happy to answer those about that project specifically. There's a, a few other projects we have going on in Lee County, but I can stop there if there's questions.
Questions on the Tramway intersection? Commissioner Carver?
No.
Commissioner Connect?
Is there also a corridor going through to, to Tramway Road from like the McDonald's area?
Pendergrass, right?
Yeah, Pendergrass?
So the only thing we're doing there is we're relocating Highway 78 to form it across the intersection from Pendergrass.
Just wanted to see on that one. You don't have a map of that? Commissioner Vorbeck?
Uh, I don't have it. I got it in my car. I'm happy to, to share it with you, but I, you know, I can, I can provide that to you. I can send it to the commissioners if you would like to see that. Happy to have a follow-up conversation.
So that's just the, that's the Pendergrass one?
That's the majority of the intersections throughout the corridor will be.
Oh, it's gonna be like this?
Yes.
Going all the way through? I see what you're saying. Okay.
Yeah, so that's just a typical type.
Thank you.
Intersection.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Is this similar to what Highway 55 through like Holly Springs area is?
Yes, same scenario.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're implementing the same design further south through Southern Pines and Aberdeen on US-1.
Okay.
Commissioner Reeves?
Will that impact our radio station out there?
Unfortunately, it does, yes.
I thought it would. Secondly, how about the Tramway School Route? Is that gonna be improved with any of this?
No, the, this project will only extend just enough to get the Tramway Road relocated. So it doesn't, doesn't reach that far.
That much help?
Commissioner Sharp? Okay. You may continue, sir.
Okay, thank you. So next, we want to talk about bicycle accommodations, primarily on some rural routes we have in Lee County. I know there was a few questions about a couple of routes in Chatham County. But just for a quick reference here, I wanted to provide an overview map of the bicycle plan that was adopted in the 2011 Conference of Transportation Plan for Lee County. Hopefully you can see the legend on the right for the on-road and off-road type facilities. On-road are in the brownish-orange color and off-road, which will be your greenway type facilities, are in green. So an existing route, which we don't have any existing routes in the county as far as bike facilities, those are dedicated bike facilities, as we'd like to call it. So there's none of those. We do have the old US-1 corridor that you can see with the two green labels on it. That is an existing bike route that we have identified as needing improvements. So there's, there's that. And then the others that are dash lines, those are existing roadways primarily that we've identified as needing improvements. There's two of the Buffalo Creek Greenway projects that are on there too as identified needs in the green. And I got a table and some other maps that show the specific roads that were in question, but I just wanted to show you this as a reference for what those identifiers mean. So there's a number of roads that were asked about. I do have a table we'll look at in a little more detail. I just wanted to show you, there's several of the routes that were identified that are either on the existing, needs improvements type deals or recommended improvements with the dash lines. So a few that are not in the current CTP would be Osgood Road, Post Office Road, Riddle Road. Pretty much the remainder of those will be within the existing plan. And I'll tell you how that connects to what we do when we plan in just a moment. And just looking over into the edge of Chatham County, there were three roads that were mentioned here, all but one of those Rossa Road are in the existing CTP for Chatham County as well for recommended improvements. And so here's a list of the roads and I wanted to focus in on this a little bit here. And I have a table next that kind of shows some of the recommendations. What we look at primarily when we're doing a major design for an improvement to a corridor would be the speed, number one. Most of these are rural 55 mile per hour roads and then the average ADT, which will be the fourth column. And once you start exceeding 1,000 to 1,200 vehicles a day, that's when you start looking at what we would identify as a need for a identified special bike lane or some sort of dedicated space for bicyclists. If you start looking further to the right, you look at the routes with the lane widths that are, that are more narrow. We have several routes in Chatham and a couple in Lee County that are nine-foot in width. Our desired width would be 24 feet, so 12 foot of pavement for vehicles along with a foot or two foot of paved shoulder is typically what you would see in a rural scenario. Some of these existing routes do have some paved shoulder. And you can see on the next to the last column where we do have some identified areas where we could potentially add additional shoulder width through the existing roadways as we move through and do maintenance projects or we identify major projects through the STIP to be funded. And again, on the far right, you can see those that are identified within the CTP and those that are not. And I understand there's a, an update to the CTP that's going, going on now. And so I would, you know, any ideas or any thoughts about roads with improvements, I would recommend those get included in the CTP. And then here's the, the diagram I mentioned to you. As you see, the speeds as they increase with the shades, as the shades get darker, that's when the ash tow, which is the, the national groupium of states, they make a lot of our design recommendations on when we would need, you know, moving from shared lanes under 1,000 vehicles a day to what they would identify as a, as a minimum of a five-foot shoulder. So when you start talking about width's that significant, when you need five-foot shoulder on both sides of the road for vehicles traveling in both directions, you're starting to look at a major project, obviously, when you have limited right-of-way widths on a rural route to add 10 feet of pavement, then you're moving your ditches back and then you're moving utilities back. And so then you're buying right-of-way and making major purchases there. So that becomes a very significant project. And so as we look at options, what I just mentioned would be a submittal through prioritization. For those of you who are familiar with that process or sit on the TarPO board, you're very familiar with what happens here. So these are opportunities to identify a major project to send through the prioritization process. There are some restrictions, obviously, with standalone bike projects that their local match is not provided by the state at this time. There are some conversations being had at the General Assembly about changing that to allow for standalone bike projects to be matched with state funds. But right now, that's not, not approved. Most times, if it can be accompanied through a major widening for the highway project and we add the bike lanes to that, that's an opportunity where we can provide the state match that's needed for those projects. The second, which is the inclusion, inclusion in a maintenance program project is typically where we would have a little more control at the division level where we can use contract resurfacing funds, which is our annual paving program funds. So when we let a contract, we can identify that contract to widen that, that facility one to two feet on each side of the road to try to provide more pavement width. We can adjust the striping of the pavement to provide width for additional shoulders for bicyclists. And it's a benefit for both bicyclists and your, your vehicular traffic to make those lanes wider because it becomes safer for everybody. And another one of our maintenance programs is a high-impact, low-cost program. This was something that was created by the legislature about five years ago, which allows the division to do exactly that, some lower-cost projects that make a high impact to the community. We have some scoring criteria within the division that we use to create these projects. But this is, a lot of times is similar to a widening and resurfacing, but we can do other, you know, spot improvements along a corridor if it's needed to be done, something that way. We can look at adding safety features, you know, whatever it might be to try to help, you know, provide a little bit more safety for, for bicyclists. And the big point there, the last one, inclusion in a plan or some demand. We have folks in our Bike and Ped Division who have maps, they have data on where we may have some demand on some secondary roads. But inclusion in the plan is something that signifies to us as we're putting together our five-year maintenance plan for resurfacing. There's a need on this, this route that the county's identified and we support that. So we want to make sure that we're gonna address any type of widening that we can do through those programs at the time. So that's all I'll say about the bikes. Happy to answer a question about that.
Questions or Mr. Norman? Commissioner Sharp?
Questions about this or about anything you've talked about?
Anything we've discussed so far.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the quick version, what is requirement for a, a road to get the rumble strips? I travel on a very narrow road every day, Cox Mill Road.
Mm-hmm.
And it's got the little, what is the requirement for it to have those? It's a very narrow road.
Right, right. So there's several things we'll look at. I mean, obviously, the, the first thing you're gonna look at is there a pattern of runoff-the-road type crashes where that type of edgeline rumble strip would be a, a safety feature that you could add to try to bring awareness to folks. For whatever the reason, they're distracted, you know, that, that brings them back to the focus pretty quickly. Other things we have to consider is the noise that comes along with those and what's the roadside development look like? Are there a bunch of homes along the roadway that, and once we put those in, we're gonna be hearing from those folks all night about traffic and, and that, that vibration. We're looking into what they're calling sinusoidal rumble strips, which is a pretty complex term, right? But it's the frequency that it, that it sends out from the road, from the tire noise is something that's not as bad for the, for the ear, I guess you would say, for those folks. So that's something that's kind of new to the scene that we're investigating, but we're happy to look at any situations that you want to look at. So you said Cox Mill?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. We can look at that.
Well, what he's saying, Cox Mill already has those.
Oh, he says they already do?
Yeah, they, they already do.
Okay, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
But thank you.
But yeah, that's kind of what we look at in those situations, but if there's, you know, a desire for us to, to investigate those, please, please let me know.
Commissioner Reeves?
No questions.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
No, no questions, sorry.
Commissioner Connect? Commissioner Carver?
Good thing.
I have a question.
Okay.
Regarding the access break for the sports complex on 42 Broadway Road?
Yes, sir.
Can you give us an update on that?
To my knowledge, I think we have received the appraisal back in our central right-of-way office and they are reviewing that as we speak. I don't know that I have a number on what that looks like just yet, but I'll see what I can find out.
We're definitely interested.
We are too.
We gotta have access to it to get the construction started.
Understand, understand. So yeah. Understand, understand. So yeah, I can follow up with that.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
No further questions. Are we gonna get a copy of this?
Yeah, and I have some information about eighty-seven corridor too, if you want to talk about that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so we were asked to look at the eighty-seven corridor, so this is something that is definitely on our radar. It's something that we're looking at all the time, so I just wanted to bring to light some information here. You can see the things that we've been looking at and the things that we've done in, in Lee County and even into Harnett County since twenty-seventeen. Uh, the most recent installation based on speed study and crash studies we did last year was the installing the prepare-to-stop when flashing signs northbound and southbound on eighty-seven in advance of the Trace Way-Frank Wicker intersection. We did pull a quick look at the crashes. We haven't had any turning crashes since then. That was installed last December. So we're, you know, basically five, six months into that, so to date, we haven't had any turning crashes, which, you know, the diagram I'll show you shortly is, is one of the predominant issues that we've had. So that seems to be something that's been successful. Looking here, I think we can all agree that the primary culprit for a lot of the problems we're having on eighty-seven is obviously speeding. So there's a lot of information here. You can see the posted speed, we all know is fifty-five miles per hour. But I would focus in on the high speeds that you see along each of those movements and directions is seventy minutes, miles per hour at a minimum. Obviously, way above what the posted speed limit is. The eighty-fifth percentile speed is something that we use a lot is, it's not really the average speed, but that's the average, or the speed that you would say the majority of folks are comfortable or feel comfortable driving along that corridor. So you can see in all directions, the speed, the minimum speed or eighty-fifth percentile speed there is sixty-two miles per hour or higher. And you can see that sixty-two percent or more of all the travelers along the corridor are speeding or above the speed limit. So obviously, that's a problem. We've had conversations with highway patrol. We've had conversations with Lee County Sheriff's Office. Continue to have those conversations so we can target enforcement, uh, 'cause there's, you know, unfortunately, we can't always engineer our way out of speeding problems, right? So enforcement's something that, that really helps. A little more information, this is the crash diagram from the five-year study from March of seventeen through February of last year. Forty-two crashes in that period, one fatality and one severe injury crash. The rest were classified as non-severe, and so this is only the reported crashes that we have reports for. Uh, you can see the predominant moves, again, north and south, you have a lot of rear-end collisions, northbound and southbound, and then quite a few collisions of folks turning left into Carolina Trace driveway, getting hit by folks going north. And those, that's where the fatality and the serious injury occurred. Those are obviously typically high-speed and high-damage and high, potential for high severity injury-type crashes. So again, those are the turning movement ones that since we implemented the stop-ahead or flashing warning signs have not occurred since, since that happened last December. So that seems to be a positive at this point in time. Red light running, I want to note here, this is a study that we did along with the speed study from four AM to eight PM, so a sixteen-hour period. This was done last fall. A lot of numbers here. You can see each of those three-hour time periods about how many, uh, running red light issues we had and how many seconds that they were over. You know, the, the light had been red before they ran it. Predominantly, there's, you know, one to two-second type, uh, after they've been turned red that people are running. But staggering number, seventy-six people in that time period ran red lights at these different periods total. And fourteen of those seventy-six were your large trucks. So another, another issue of concern there, obviously, that in most cases with the grades, especially around Carolina Trace going downhill, the speeds are obviously attributing to those. And so next steps, um, just something that, you know, we continue to talk about, like the coordination between law enforcement and us. We have a, Harnett County is not under my purview, but we have a, a close working relationship with our partners in Highway Division Six, so we, we coordinate with them frequently. We're gonna continue to look at, you know, countermeasures as, as things come up. What we haven't gone to so far are protected left turns at the major intersections, so the protected green arrows, that's something that we're looking at now. You know, we're happy to, to, to partner with the county or others on additional public outreach. And I don't know what that looks like, but I think we can put our heads together and see if there's, you know, radio ads or other, you know, targeted Facebook ads, Instagram, whatever social media, you know, outreach that we could do to potentially help with that. And then identify funding considerations for potential projects. You know, we mentioned the reduced conflict intersection and the benefits that it has. That's something that we could start considering if that's something that was, you know, palatable to the locals here and that you guys wanted to talk about. So probably something that probably is worth conversation at the RPO level that we can start talking about, you know, what are our options, knowing that we got our next round of prioritization coming up? And we'll have future oper, uh, future opportunities as well. Is there a project that we want to look at and start, you know, getting into a little bit more? We have funds available where we can do conceptual designs and feasibility studies to try to help digest that and see what that might look like and what impacts that could have to traffic, so. So that's all I got there. So happy to answer questions about eighty-seven.
What about coming from Tremway into Jonesboro? Is it on the radar?
We don't have a project identified there right now.
Have you thought about it? Have you looked at it? Do you have traffic count, anything in that area? Because there's a lot of congestion coming through there.
Yeah, there's a lot of new development coming in there. I don't know the last time we've done a, a speed study or a traffic study, but that's something that we can do. I'll make a note of that, and we can follow up with that.
Commissioner Sharp, questions? Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Vorbick?
No, sir.
Commissioner Carver? Just working on that highway break for the sports complex.
It's on my list. And I'll follow up. I'll follow up with county manager as soon as we have information.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mathis. Please drive safely. Wear your seatbelts and no speeding. Next item on the agenda is the 2020-12 tax bill write-off. Mr. Brown?
Good evening, commissioners and staff. Good to be with you tonight. I come before you tonight with the 2012 tax bill write-off. We request the authority to write off the delinquent 2012 tax bills in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. For real property, that's five thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents, and for personal property, it's sixteen thousand, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. This is per North Carolina General Statute three seventy-three G and one oh five three seventy-eight. These taxes were first due on September first of 2012. A detailed list of the delinquent accounts is on file in the clerk's office and available on the commissioner's webpage. And if you also look, we've attached a three-year history of the write-offs. So after ten years, we can't enforce collections.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Questions for Mr. Brown? Commissioner Carver?
No.
Commissioner Connect?
So moved.
Commissioner, motion's been made to approve. Continuing on questions? Commissioner Vorbick? Commissioner Reeves?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve the tax write-off for 2020-12 delinquent tax bills in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents per North Carolina General Statute one oh five three seventy-three G and one oh five three seventy-eight. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda is a request from Lee County School Board for the county to purchase modular unit for Southern Lee High School.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, appreciate you giving us the opportunity tonight. And if I may, so we don't have a formal presentation to provide you guys. I think there's hopefully been some information given. But I did want to lay out a timeline, right? So obviously, we acknowledge that we just got through budget season, and I was here, I don't know, about a month ago, presenting our standard budget and our capital budget, none of which included the request before you tonight. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to provide kind of a timeline for you to explain why we're coming to you with like an emergency request. So just very quickly, so the, the central office had a leadership change that happened on May ninth, and that was less than a week before our budget presentation before the commissioners, which was on May the fifteenth. And again, that budget request included the capital request, which did not have a line item for these modular units that we're requesting funding for tonight. So that was May fifteenth. We had a facilities and technology committee meeting on May the eighteenth, so three days later, and that is where we learned of the immediate need at Southern Lee High School for classroom space. And that was based on, I think if you guys received the information, so there were several things that have been done at Southern Lee to, um, really accommodate kind of an overcrowding situation, to create classroom space where it was never intended to be. So that's where we had that discussion. And that night, we talked about using lottery funds for this mobile unit purchase. So that's kind of how we proceeded at that May the eighteenth meeting. So we had another special called facilities and technology meeting on June the seventh to again discuss that primarily. And at that meeting, um, it was shared with the board that we cannot use lottery funds for that purchase since mobile units are not permanent structured. Lottery funds are not able to be spent on that. So at that point, um, well, I wanted to note, so that was June seventh. So we had the, the, the public hearing for the county budgets. That was on June the fifth. So again, we came before you again. I was, I was at the meeting and made some public comments there. That was two days before our special called meeting where we learned that we didn't have lottery funds available for this purchase. So basically, at that special called meeting, we figured that we had to do something because we don't have a funding source. So at that point, um, our board chair, Ms. Womack, engaged Chairman Smith, and we had a meeting on June sixteenth to discuss this need, and that's how we ended up on your agenda here tonight. So with that, I suppose I would, um, you know, we do have another, at least one other board member here, Mr. Ladotti, and several members of our administrative staff, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have about this request.
Thank you, Mr. Rommel. Questions for Mr. Rommel? Commissioner Sharp?
No, I don't have any.
Commissioner Reeves?
I had spoken with the, our manager and asked for some numbers regarding the, do you have those?
Yes, sir. I was not able to get copies printed before I had to come over for another meeting, but I do have the capacity numbers.
That's all right. We can just talk about.
Right. Um, I'm sticking to my paper. Current capacity at Southern Lee is two, um, twelve hundred, and they are currently at twelve hundred and twenty-seven students. Lee County High School is a capacity of sixteen hundred and seventy-five, and they are at fourteen hundred and forty-five is the current enrollment. As far as their elementary schools and middle schools, including the modular units that are all those at the different facilities, everything else is under capacity.
And how many are you requesting modular units?
So the specific unit for Southern Lee, it's actually, I guess we're gonna call it a pod, right? So it's, it's multi-classrooms. There's eight classrooms as well as restrooms, just due to the location of where it would have to be placed. So it's essentially, um, they have similar units, I think, at like Grace and then at the CCCC campus out by Industrial Park. So it's essentially like ten, I, I don't know how many exactly, ten or twelve units that are together, so it makes a single space. Does that make sense?
It does to the people who lease them, I'm sure, but tell me, how many are you talking about purchasing on this deal?
They have requested to purchase an eight-classroom unit, and it would also include restrooms.
Okay, eight-classroom unit. Is that the smallest you can request, or?
No, it's my understanding that they can request a four-classroom unit that would also have restrooms.
That's correct. Yeah, that, that exists, and, and I do have cost for that, if you're interested.
Please.
For comparison. So, so the four-classroom unit, um, with restrooms, all-in setup would cost approximately seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So that is three hundred and sixty-seven thousand less than the eight-classroom unit. I would highlight that, I think according to the growth numbers that I've seen projected, if we were to purchase a four-classroom unit, I think we would be back here next year requesting additional funding for more space. So I think the eight-classroom unit is a bit more forward-thinking, forward-planning.
Have you ever thought about redistricting? It seems like you've got a, a big sway here. You've got, what was that number, two hundred and some classroom space at one and?
Twelve hundred at one school and, um, sorry, sixteen hundred and seventy-five at the other.
Yeah, so I think, I think Lee Senior right now, we have approximately two hundred seats open compared to capacity. So with the overs we have, I mean, you'd be talking about a slight redistrict, but I don't, I don't know, I've never been part of redistricting effort, but I don't know if that's feasible to do in the amount of time before the beginning of the next school year. But I would also note that I think, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Reeves asked, hey, can you get away with a four unit?
Sure.
That gives you time for the, to do, think about doing some redistricting as a potential.
Right.
To say, hey, we got some room over here.
Right.
How come you haven't utilized it as of yet, is my question.
Sure. I mean, I, I think, I suppose as far as my opinion goes and seeing the county growth numbers we've seen, I would expect Lee Senior to perhaps be bumping up against the capacity in the next year or two. So the majority of the growth in the county is in the Lee Senior district. So as far as, you know, the new, new developments coming up and all that. So with the, with headroom of approximately two hundred seats at Lee Senior, I personally would be hesitant to do a redistrict that might only buy us a, a single year worth of, worth of margin right before another redistrict may need to be done, or additional mobile units, right?
Well, I mean, we, we have a plan to put, to expand the Southern Lee High School, right? So we're looking at, how much time does one actually truly need? I don't think you know for, for sure.
Right.
How many kids are coming in or not? How often do other districts redistrict? How, how other counties redistrict? How often do they do it? We compare with Wake all the time. How often does Wake redistrict?
I don't know the answer to that question. I know, I mean, I've heard, you know, seen news stories, as everybody probably has, that it's a major headache where parents get upset as children partway through high school or move to another high school. You know, so it causes a lot of upset within the county. I would just highlight that. I'm not saying it's impossible, but.
You know, we, we have to think about taxpayers.
Right, yeah.
And, and money-wise. So like you said, it's not a huge shift, but I, I think that's a, that's a big consideration I think Mr. Reeves is, is thinking about there, I'm thinking. I'm surprised we haven't never even looked at it. I don't even know, what about elementary schools? I'm sure that's gonna be an issue sometime.
It is.
Have we even looked at that?
It, it's been discussed, yes.
But the numbers haven't been run?
No, not as far as an actual redistricting, no?
Yeah.
No, no.
I don't have it been looked at, is what I'm assuming. You gotta run the numbers in order to look at it.
We, we have run the numbers, so we do have estimates that have been put together for, call it within the next three to five years of the growth that we expect to see. But as far as potential to redistrict and, and shuffle, um, we've not specifically looked at that yet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vorbick? Questions?
I believe the only question I had with the eight unit, um, in the request for the six unit, or the, the six classrooms on the auditorium, is what's the plan for the, like, if you have two extra rooms now, are you gonna downsize two years from now, or are we gonna be looking at two modulators with the six classrooms? Like, I guess what's the forethought on that one?
Yeah, so I think there's probably, I think that's a multifaceted answer. So it's my understanding with the six classrooms, I don't know that we would have space available to do more than that if that's what we chose to do. I think that's something that we could discuss, obviously, during the architectural work to see what we actually have space to do. And then I suppose the disparity between the eight classrooms we're requesting and the six in that build unit, um, I think, again, it's just kind of forward-looking. So we know that we've got teachers sharing space already. We've got media centers being used. And then we know that we're gonna have growth coming in, you know, just through population growth. So I think the eight classrooms just kind of buys us, I mean, I would hope an extra year worth of margin to be able to not have to come back and make another request. And I think it was noted on the info sheet that, so there are several rooms that are supposed to be working space for staff at the school that have been converted to classrooms. So that, those eight rooms would all be utilized. We wouldn't necessarily have mothballed rooms while we waited for students, right? So there are purposes available that we would utilize.
I, I, yeah, I just worry that you're gonna get comfortable at eight rooms, then we only have six, and is that, is that design gonna be different? Like, I guess my thought process is if, if you start the architectural design, they should mirror each other, even with forward-thinking on the eight classrooms. So I think that was where the, I, just trying to, six and eight don't equal. So I just want to not set up an issue two years from now, kind of thing.
Right, and I think, I mean, I suppose this may be a bit of speculation, but I, I would suggest that in approximately two to three years, by the time that permanent project would be finished, that we would likely need additional space outside of that six classrooms. I don't know that that necessarily answers your question, but I think.
No, it's just if we're, if, if you went with the eight and you got eight, maybe rethinking the six you're wanting to build. It's more, I'm just saying that I think they need to mirror each other instead of.
Yeah, and I think that'll become a function of, of just the available. Yeah, and I think that'll become a function of, of just the available space, right? So I know we've got specific footprint that we have, but as far as the architectural work, so I don't, I don't know if we're talking one or two stories.
I'm wondering if you can even build eight, yeah. Oh, I just, I don't know, I just see it maybe setting up for, they've gotten used to this, and then you're gonna be scrambling again.
Are they gonna be permanent?
I'm sorry?
Are they gonna be permanent?
These mobile classrooms?
Yeah.
No, so they, there is the ability to move those in the future, if we, if we have that capacity need somewhere else and it's no longer needed at Southern, those can be moved.
And then we bought four as opposed to eight, to give you time to look at redistricting, give you time to consider what this new state budget is gonna do in terms of grant money for other schools?
That's true. I'm, I'm not aware of any potential grant money for additional capacity space. I, my understanding is that's a county issue.
I'm not talking about capacity, I'm saying you are likely to lose some students.
I think he's referring to the money that follows the head of the student.
Oh, the child, money follows the child.
Yeah, so I, I guess I don't, I don't disagree there, Commissioner. I think for, for me personally, just looking at the numbers and what we have today, I, I feel like that's kind of speculating and creating a scenario that, that is hard for us to plan to. So we'll obviously, you know, keep an eye on what that does for student population in public schools, but at this point, all we have are the numbers.
Your request for eight is speculation.
That's right.
And it's gonna cost us $700,000 more.
So the additional spend from four to eight is 367,000. So to go, to go from four to eight, so I think the, the four classroom unit is about two-thirds of the price. So I think the per classroom price going from four to eight is, is somewhat small. And I think if we go and have to add additional space next year, if that, if that were to come to fruition, then we're talking about, once again, paying, you know, freight and, and these setup charges that are kind of the same per classroom. So just, again, to me personally, my opinion, I think it's worth the extra spend now to take the eight.
I respect that, and I hope you'll respect mine. I don't wanna spend another, twice as much money and not do the work that we should have already been doing in terms of capacity and space availability. I'm gonna support four, is what I will support. I'll just tell you that.
Commissioner Carver?
Is that a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
I, I've sat in on some of these discussions. One, one thing that I think answers your question, Commissioner Reeves, is that the capacity to move those units at a later date, anticipating some changes in middle school and elementary school, gives us a resource to be able to use them later. And the increase in cost is not double, is that right? It's not double if you go from four to eight?
That's, that's correct, it's about 30, 30%.
Yeah. So when it comes time to assess the availability of space, three years from now, when we finally get the increase in the auditorium, et cetera, those units just may be a real nice thing to have in our back pocket, anticipating the growth that, that they've already anticipated. The other thing I'd really like to express is that-
I can appreciate that, but I'd rather have the money in my pocket.
Understood, you'd rather have the money. The other thing I'd like to express is that I think the, the, the way that this new management, shall we say, of the school board, and the way they're trying to make the superintendent's communication with the superintendent work better, ilus, this, this rapidity with which they've been able to come up with some ideas, et cetera, when they were faced with this, with this disaster, I think for the most part reflects good on what you're trying to do. And rather than think that they aren't doing the right job, I think they're doing a good job of trying to evaluate and put us in a good position. They've done some forward-thinking with the limits of the information that we have, and we're really talking about not that much more, in order to give them the eight that they're asking for. So I hope we can find a way to, to support them and give them the eight classrooms. Thank you.
I do have a question. Any more questions?
No.
I do have a question. Now, as I understood when we had our meeting, the eight classrooms will cost $1,152,348 to include the $220,000 setup costs.
That's correct.
What is the setup cost on the $785,000 for classrooms?
So, that setup cost that I'm, I'm looking at listed is essentially the same, so it's the 220,000, because you're talking about including things like electrical, which is gonna be the same-
Correct.
-to provide power regardless of size.
Sewer.
Yep, sewer, plumbing, fire permits.
Permits.
Yep. And then, so, concrete contractors, so, again, pouring footings, we're talking about a few less footings, but to get the contractor out there, the price is probably generally the same. Technology, which would be our internet service and all that. So a lot of those setup costs are essentially the same minus, you know, the extra blocks and the few extra pieces that you attach to that modular.
What I understand, but I'm asking the question, you've got four pods, or four classrooms cost $785,000. Does that include the 220?
Yes.
Setup fee, okay. 'Cause I noticed when we were talking about leasing, the leasing adds 220 to it. If we were to lease those?
If we were to lease the eight, you mean?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, as far as values concerned, those, that's what we're looking at?
Are these leases or these purchases?
These are purchases.
These are purchases.
Yeah. We do have a motion to approve the purchase of four classroom module designs for approximately $785,000. Any further discussion?
I do have one question.
Question.
Can the eight be split into two fours?
So I think with the restroom situation, I don't-
Please. Who's the man with the expertise?
Good evening. The eight classroom, now, you can take off a couple of classrooms, they can add aside to it. With the four, you can't split it up, because it's a whole set, solid pod. So it's not four individual classrooms with a restroom out there too. It's a building just like you saw at Grace Christian or Lee Early College.
And the reasons for the restrooms is the distance from the, the main campus, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the classrooms have to be so many feet away from the restrooms.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
How many kids are allowed in a classroom at present? I'm sorry?
How many kids are allowed in a classroom at present, heck it, for the capacity, per room?
I think it's-
So that really varies depending on the course. If you have a class such as a culinary class, it's limited to about 20, but a regular English, math, science, and social studies, you're looking at an average of 26 to 28.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We have a motion on the floor for purchasing a four portable classroom, $785,000. Although, yes, sir?
I just wanted to get, get some clarity on something. We were talking about the possibility of redistricting. So while if we, if this passes for the four, are you gonna be working or considering that at all?
I don't, that's something we would have to discuss in Facilities and Technology, because, I mean, again, I, I guess before I stand here before you tonight, with the 200 seats available at Lee Senior, I would suggest that it may not be worth the time to look at. But that's something we can discuss in committee.
Okay. Then, second part of that is, do you have the maximum capacity and current attendance for all your schools?
Yes, sir, we do.
May we have a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That was it. You got it.
The manager has a copy, she wasn't able to get copies for us.
Thank you.
Can I make one more comment?
Please.
I, I'm concerned about trying to make a decision about changing what they're recommending after they've spent the amount of time that I've watched them spend, and try to dedicate attention to how many classrooms they actually need. They were kind of surprised by this change. And they're trying their best to have the flexibility that they need. Some other issues that are involved, the idea of six versus eight that Commissioner Vorbeck brought up. If, we still have another, at least three years to go before we're gonna have those six classrooms, and if we had the eight and we could move them around, and we could make adjustments to, to redistricting, et cetera, over that period of three years, that's a, that's a great idea. But having the eight classrooms in our back pocket really before, provides the, the flexibility to be able to address increases in other areas of the school system, and it also reflects on the work that they've done in order to determine what they really need right now. So I would recommend just thinking the idea that maybe going to the eight rather than the four is not that great a risk. And it's also, from a standpoint of cost per classroom, very effective, possibly being able to use. Maybe the best thing to do is, based on that, I, I would like to amend the motion to eight instead of four. And I move that.
Motion's been made to amend the motion from four to eight classrooms. Any further discussion? Seeing there are none, all those in favor of amending the motion from eight to, from four to eight classrooms, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Kind of show of hands, please, on those four? Those opposed? Okay, motion doesn't carry. We'll go back to the main motion of four classrooms at $785,000. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies. Next item on the agenda is manager's report, monthly financial and sales tax report. Ms. Candace?
Good evening. Tonight, you have the May financial report in your packets. The ad valorem taxes are, have exceeded 101%. The targeted expense used for May is expenditures used is 91.67%. There are a few departments that have exceeded that. If you remove the encumbrances, that, one of those would be juvenile detention, and a budget amendment has been made to bring that back in line. Sales tax revenues for March are 9.61% over the same period last fiscal year.
Questions for Ms. Candace? Placement? Commissioner Sharp?
No, sir.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
No question.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Before Candace leaves, Candace will have a intern or fellow starting in August, and I want her to tell you a little bit about that person, if you don't mind.
So the UNC School of Government has a lead for NC Fellows Program, and it is an annual program where you apply for a fellow to come and work with you for a year. It is subsidized by multiple organizations, and you submit a scope of work, and then they choose amongst, this time, amongst 80 applicants. So Lee County was chosen for the first time. It is also the first year that they have a finance track. So among the first, this is, we were the first pick for the person that we ended up choosing, and she happens to be a former young commissioner for Lee County.
Oh, no. Fantastic.
Her name is Suzie Brito-Lagunas, and she will join us in August.
Oh, my word, that's amazing, great. Can we keep her?
For a year, and then she plans to go to law school.
Oh, no, we have three lawyers.
That's what I meant. Well, she's very passionate about education policy, so she wants to continue on with that. But she is very, also very passionate about helping the area that she grew up with, so she was very excited to, to be part of the Lee County Government Organization, and we are very excited to-
Please tell us what school she came from?
I'm sorry?
What school she graduated?
She, UNC in Chapel Hill, she double majored in business, and I think it's public policy. And she minored in religious studies. She went to Lee Early College, and like I said, she is familiar with Dr. Stone, and we're very excited.
Very good. See, they do come back.
We were hoping that the young, the young commissioners would be here to hear that, so-
Oh, well, we'll make sure they get that message.
We were very tickled when we found that out.
Thank, thank you, Candace.
I'll introduce her, or reintroduce her in August.
We'll be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Haley, are you ready?
County manager, please.
I'm gonna let Haley go ahead and do the boards and commissions, if that's okay?
Oh, yes.
All right, we do have the results tabulated. Thank you, Whitney and Jennifer, for your assistance with that. I'm just gonna go through and read them down the list. For the ADA Committee, we have Elon, Elonda Wambel. The Airport Authority, we have Jonathan Shaki. The Agriculture Advisory Board, Lloyd Smith. The Central Carolina Board of Trustees, Taylor Vorbeck. The Joint Environmental Affairs Board, Lloyd Smith. The Jury Commission, Angela Minnick. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, all five were selected. Angela Minnick, Pamela Atkins, Eutarius Murgison, Bobby Covington, and Cynthia Galion. The Library Board of Trustees, we have our reappointment of Kathy Griffith. The Parks and Recreation Commish, Commission, we have, as the regular seat, Nathan Vorbeck, and Pamela Atkins as the alternate seat. And then for the Planning Board, we have the three reappointments as our regular seats, which is Chuck Baker, Charles David Turner, and Jonathan Hilliard, with Brad Kelly as the alternate. And then, for the Joint Nursing Adult Family Care Home Committee, Community Advisory Committee, we have the three reappointments of Harold Ford, Nancy Johnson, and Jeanette Scott. So congratulations to all of them, and I will, excuse me, I will notify them by the end of the week of their appointments. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a few project updates for you. You heard the update on the Moore Training Facility. Thank you for approving the skimmers tonight, so we can keep moving on that. As far as the multi-sports complex goes, we are almost through reviewing the 100% drawings, and we hope to be out to bid by July 18th with a due date prior to Labor Day, so that we can keep moving on the financing. That would be perfect timing. The, we are still working with a few issues with the Sea of Sanford before the final plans are done. Horton Pool, Jennifer, would you like to do the update on Horton Pool?
So, right now, we're still not at substantial completion. We're, we're there with the pool house, but with the pool itself, there are still several issues. If you go by the pool right now, it looks like it's fairly there. You can see the splash pad features, the pavers in the pool look like it's ready, but there's several small things. There's a number of things that were on the inspection report that we're gonna have to continue to work through, along with the Fire Marshal's report as well. So some of that involves things like ordering a emergency push bar gate, and we're gonna have to have that installed. So that's a little bit outside of the scope of work for Southeast Aquatics, but we also have a few issues, like there might be a leak in the pool, and there might be some punchless items we'll have to work through. So right now, I don't have a projected opening date for the pool. We'll have to continue to update you on that. We're meeting with the contractor this week, and again, next week, to kind of stay on top of getting these final small items taken care of. So it's kind of a moving target, but, you know, hopefully we'll have some better news, you know, by, by the 1st of July. So I'll just keep you updated on that as we get more information.
Thank you. Phase one of Phase Two parks have projects with Kiwanis Children's Park and Temple. At Kiwanis Children's Park, we are, we're almost ready to go out to bid in the next month for construction costs. That will include a smaller playground structure for children ages two to five, and a restroom and shelter combination located where the existing restrooms are, and ADA accessible sidewalks throughout the park. We're continuing to work on Phase Two at Temple. Also, the items have been ordered, so we're waiting for those to come in, and Jeremy Thomas is working on the connections for the restrooms to the sewer and water once the facility is built. The library building project, Vines is currently in the design development phase of the project, and is starting to design the interior spaces within the library, and they're working heavily with the audio, visual, and IT sections of the building. Jay Tom, Jeremy Thomas Engineering will complete the design work for outside utility construction to the site once an easement is procured, and the final determination for connection for the sewer is May. Historic Courthouse, Hobbs Architects continues to work on the design for the rehabilitation for that project, and we're hoping to keep that moving. EMS, EMS parking rehab, the parking lot, the EMS ambulance station located at 1218 Central Drive has been completed and subject to final inspection. EMS, EMS parking rehab, the parking lot, the EMS ambulance station located at twelve eighteen Central Drive has been completed and subject to final inspection. The jail feasibility study, the request proposals for that study will be issued this week. It says next week, but this was, cause that was written last week. So that will be going out this week. There was a little bit of delay and misunderstanding in what that project was supposed to entail. So we are now moving ahead with that. Human services consolidation, the first meeting for the new consolidated human services board will be held on July twelfth at seven PM in the Gordon Ricker Room at the Government Center. And we'll be moving forward with the consolidation of our two units of Health Department and Social Services. You see the list of various reports that were attached and upcoming meetings and events that will be happening. Remember, we only have one meeting in July, August, and September as scheduled unless something comes up. But the meeting in July will be July twenty-fourth. All three of meetings will be here at the Civic Center. And then of course, we have the NCA CCC conference, August twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth. I believe that is everything I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions for the manager? Commissioner Sharp?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Vorbeck? Commissioner Connect?
Thank you.
Commissioner Carver? Seeing there are no, no further- Commissioner comments? We'll start with Commissioner Sharp.
Yeah, I was pleased to hear that we have one of our young commissioners coming back to work with us, at least for a year anyway. And you know, as always, I wish we could give more to, to education, but I think we, we treated them fair and going forward, you know, they need to evaluate what needs to, to happen and, you know, we'll, we'll look at helping them again. And that's all.
Commissioner Vorbeck?
I just, I wanted to say that I feel like there's kinda been a dialogue and a dichotomy that's started to create that by voting a certain way, that's not in agreement with necessarily what the school board's presenting, is that it's also equivalent to the respect and the work that they've put together. And I feel like they have done, the new school board's done an incredible job in the six months that they've been in here and been in office and been, and, and been moving things in a direction that is positive for Lee County. But just because it doesn't necessarily go a hundred percent their way, doesn't mean that what we're doing as a board is not in the best interest of what, of what's being said. I think there was some good discussion that was brought up with the classrooms. And I feel like a continued transparency between them and between us, I think will continue in the next year to come. That will, I think, create a better future in how we handle the needs that are obviously coming with the growing county. That's it.
Commissioner Connect?
Just prayers. I think there was, wasn't there a fire in Broadway?
House fire? It was in Hartnett County.
Yeah, it was Hartnett County. It was still in the Broadway community. I just wanted to send my condolences and prayers. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Carver?
I was told this evening that Jim Womack apparently ended up going to the hospital with a heart attack. And that's why Sherilyn Womack was not here. She's the chairman of the school board. So I'm sure our concerns and prayers go after him. I'm trusting that he's doing better at this point. The other thing, I, I guess I'd like to reply a little bit to the idea that there's been a number of decisions recently-
This morning.
-that have considered recommendations from the school board. And I, I feel like the recommendations that have been presented have been very professional and well thought out. Sometimes I think it must be difficult for them to come in and make a presentation and then find us deciding on whether or not they need four or eight classrooms, when in fact they're on scenes and they're dealing with the reality. I know it's a question of money. But sometimes I think it's better for us to go ahead and support the new school board, and I say new because they in fact are a new leadership, and give them the tools that maybe they need to dig us out of two years of disaster with COVID, et cetera. And I'm hoping that we can continue to express our confidence in them in some way, other than just comments. I, I think it's important for us to follow up with the funds that they need to have. Anyway, I appreciate the fact that we all have a chance to listen to these things and we do the best we can and we vote and we move on. I understand that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I, I would like to add to the Board of Education discussion. I wanna say this much. In the short period of time this new board's been in office, the chairwoman, the superintendent, we've had enormous amounts of communications, which is exceptional compared to the past. I can't say enough there. We have a relationship we're building. We wish to do the right thing, but we also have constraints. I have a seven board member that I have to get a majority. And when we have constraints and we have questions and we have those items that we wanna check, we wanna talk about, we want to cross-reference, then we have that opportunity. I can't say enough with the new Board of Education, the new chair, we've got a great relationship communicating. Not always pleasant, but it is communications. Just wanna let everyone know, probably on the ninth of July, we will be heading to upstate New York. I wanna say a week. I'll let you all know when the final approval is done with Home Station Six. Just wanna remind you, today's Juneteenth day and I was reminded and forgot all about it that there's ten years we have had the young commissioners. And I introduced myself to the commissioners and of course, I always stated, when you're always out campaigning, knocking on doors and you let them know you're a commissioner running for office, first question out of their mouth is, what does a commissioner do? First thing out of my mouth is, we don't do roads. So I make sure I cover that and that being said, the youngsters have done an outstanding job and, and it pleases me to no end to know that we have one coming back to Lee County and we're gonna have her for a year. Outstanding. Talk her out of law school. Keep her focused. Thank you. With that, with that-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We're now adjourned. Thank you very much.